Well, good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to Albany City Council Meeting on Wednesday, July twenty-sixth nineteen twenty-two, almost at nineteen six P. M. I would like to call the meeting to order and then we'll do the pleasurable allegiance. Counselor Bartholomew, would you lead us in the pleasurable allegiance today?
Yes, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, Councilor Bartholomew. Can we have a roll call vote, please? A roll call, please?
You can have either, but I think probably just the roll call is good right now. Counselor Bartholomew.
Here.
Thank you, Counselor Kupczynski.
Here.
Counselor Johnson.
Here.
Counselor Smith.
Here.
Counselor Olson.
Here.
Counselor Novak. Mayor Johnson II.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, the next up on the agenda is a proclamation for four chaplains day February third. Proclamation for chaplains day February third. Whereas February third, twenty-twenty-two will mark the seventy-ninth anniversary of the sinking of the troop ship U. S. A. T. Dorchester, which carried to their deaths you for U. S. Army, United States Army chaplains who stood united in prayer as the ship went down. And whereas these four chaplains were from diverse religious backgrounds, gave their own life jackets to four soldiers and thus sacrificed their own lives to save the lives of others. And whereas the heroic deeds of chaplains Lieutenant George L. Fox, Lieutenant Alexander D. Good, Lieutenant Johnny P. Washington, and Lieutenant Clark V. Polling, and their combined act of supreme devotion and sacrifice for American liberty and human freedom will be an inspiring and ever-shining example of the real brotherhood for all time to the people of the world and whereas we must all see to it that their supreme sacrifice is long along with that of all servicemen and women to the common cause of human freedom and justice for all shall not have been in vain. Now, therefore, I, Alexander D. Johnson II, Mayor of the city of Albany, do hereby proclaim February third, twenty-twenty-two as four chaplains day in Albany Order and call upon our citizens to commemorate the day with appropriate services. In witness whereof, I hereunto set my hand and the coffin seal of the city of Albany to be affixed this twenty-sixth day of January, twenty-twenty-two. I was under D. Johnson, the second mayor. Thank you all. If you haven't had an opportunity to read the story, there's much more to it than what we I've read here today. It's a very powerful story, and I greatly appreciate you taking the time to review that. So I'm happy to do a special presentation. So Chief Wood is going to be here for Albany Fire Department Civilian Life Saving Awards. So I'll turn it over to Chief Wood. Is he with us? I saw him earlier.
It looks like we just lost him. I don't know if they maybe hit the wrong.
How do you lose a whole fire?
Button. I think they might have hit leave meeting instead of unmute.
So what we could do, we can go on to the next topic and then come back and do the life-saving award, if that's okay with everyone in the council. Is that okay? Thank you. Good to see you, Counselor Novak.
Yes, my apologies. I was delayed.
No worries. I'm glad you're here today. Business from the public persons wanting to comment or provide written materials for the record must register to speak and attach the materials, the email address for writing the agenda before noon the day of the meeting. We'll have one person here to speak with us today that signed up to speak.
Mayor, I'm sorry, we're back.
Well, you're back. Okay, so let's go ahead and lay that. Chief Wu, you have the floor.
All right. Thank you very much, Mayor, Council, and staff. We have a special presentation tonight, and I just have to kind of tell you that listening to the stories before this presentation, I got goosebumps two times. And I think after when you think about what we're going to talk about tonight, you probably will as well. So I want to kind of set the stage, if I could. This is Maia, Maia, Maia and Jeremy. Both of them are Home Depot employees, and this is Ekepa, Ea Kepa. And Ea Kepa, and I'll review the nomination here in a minute, went into cardiac arrest.
Excuse me, Chief, I'm sorry, but you're sideways. We're looking at you guys.
Doesn't like it.
Okay, Sandy's messing with it here. And she's just gonna hold it on her own. How about now?
Thank you.
Much better.
People don't have to turn their heads sideways any longer. They can look at the screen straight, straight on. So, let me just go ahead and jump into what happened on October twenty-fifth at the Home Depot here in town. And I'm just going to read the nomination form that was presented. So on October twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-one, the Albany Fire Department was called for a possible seizure. Albany Fire Department units arrived to find the patient in cardiac arrest. The employees of Home Depot should be commended for their efforts, including a life-saving treatment of the patient. Home Depot employees performed CPR, including the use of an AED, automatic external defibrillator, and delivered a needed shock to the patient. The early actions of the Home Depot employees and their life-saving efforts made a big difference that day. The patient was emergently transported and received further care at Good Samaritan Regional Medical Center. The patient was eventually discharged to go home. No doubt, the actions of the employees at the Home Depot were integral in saving this person's life. In addition to the heroic life-saving efforts provided by the Home Depot employees, other employees helped the overall situation as well. Employees directed emergency responders to the patient's location. Employees blocked off the aisle where the patient was to keep the patient responder safe and able to perform their work. Employees kept the access to and from the ambulance and other emergency vehicles clear as well. This coordinated effort contributed to the positive outcome of this response. So with that, Mayor and Council, this is really one of those times where I mean, the system worked. It couldn't have worked any any better, where somebody went into cardiac arrest in a public space, employees recognized it, and it happened to be a proactive business, the Home Depot, that had an AED available. Employees were trained to jump in and to start doing CPR, even if you weren't trained, you knew just to get down and do compression, so good job. And then to use the AED that was provided. If they had not acted, have somebody standing next to me that has a renewed second chance at life, and I'm looking out into the audience, and I see his family, his beautiful family. And because of their actions, he's able to continue to be with them. So with that, I have a life-saving award for Jeremy Hills and a challenge coin from the Albany Fire Department. Thank you very much. For you, a life-saving award and a challenge coin. So so with that, Mayor, I turn it back over to you, and thank you for dealing with our technical difficulties.
No problem. On behalf of the entire city of Albany, the mayor and city council, and all the members of the staff, appreciate your work and the steps you took to save this gentleman's life. So thank you very much from the bottom of our heart. And we're so proud that you're part of our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, my screen's back together. I'm all misty-eyed. Give me just a second. Get reoriented with my screens. There we go. Next on the agenda. Where's my mouse? Well, there it is. Sorry about this. Internet is slow right now. Here we go, back on track. Okay, the next one is a special second reading with ordinance, amend the Albany Municipal Code Title eighteen, Building Board of Appeals. Jonathan Balkema spoke on it. Since it's the second reading.
It's Excuse me, Mayor.
Yes.
I think we had business from the public before this item.
Sorry, I just jumped right over. Sorry about that. We go back. Business from the business from the public persons wanting to comment or provide written materials to the to for the record must register to speak and attach their materials to the email address provided in the agenda before noon of the day of the meeting. We had no material submitted. However, we had one person sign up to speak with us, and that is Miss Carol, Mrs. Carol Davies. The following people have registered as Carol Davies. Please, Miss Davies, you have three minutes, and if you need more time, I can extend it. You're muted, Carol.
Unmute. Sorry about that. Thank you very much. I wanted to fill you in on one of the really important pieces of work that Creating Housing is doing. And that is the formation of COT, which is Community Outreach Assistance Team. It is our street outreach team in Albany. It started when one of our board members suggested that we each take a look at who the unhoused people were and ask them if we could mentor them if they were interested. In doing some research, I found out that the street outreach program has not been in existence for the past two years. So I made some phone calls, and I was able to put together a great group. The group consists of Creating Housing Coalition members, Chance, CSC, and FAC, which is Family Assistance Resource Center out of Lebanon and Sweet Home. Together, we have been ministering to the unhoused people in Albany. The very first thing that happened when I when I first started going out was I got a phone call from somebody right around Christmas time, and I was told that a lot of people's camps had flooded and people were trapped, and we had to go out there. So I put together a team, and we went out and we helped people. A lot of people lost their camps. And one of the things that really struck me was without this team going out, there's nobody looking out after the unhoused people here. Nobody would know if somebody was in trouble without us being there. So really important work. What I'm doing right now has kind of progressed from just going out and helping the people who are unhoused to helping the agencies that help these people. Another thing that I discovered that was really obvious was that there were there was no communication between these agencies, and there are huge gaps. And most of the people that are we're supposed to be helping were falling through these gaps, and they weren't being helped. So I'm sorry, am I going to get a little more extra time?
Hear more. I'd like to hear more. Keep going.
Great, thank you. So what I do is I'm working as a liaison with CSC, with Senior and Disability Services, with Chance, and with community members, and I'm connecting everybody together so that the services that are provided can work more seamlessly. And hopefully, we can prevent more people from falling through those cracks. So that's a really important part of what I'm doing, and I have to tell you that it is taking up a tremendous amount of time. This needs to be, I believe, a paying position because it's critical for the success of all of these agencies' programs. And as I said, it just it takes up a lot of time and a lot of resources. So the other thing that I'm doing besides the outreach and acting as a liaison is all of our group members have been taking trainings. We thought that it really didn't make a lot of sense to have volunteers go out if they didn't know how to to respond to people who might be in a crisis situation or, you know, who didn't have a lot of skills. So we have already done an introduction to street outreach, which Scotty McKee led. We've done a harm reduction training. We've done de-escalation. We've done knock-hand training. And as soon as Lynn County Mental Health puts it back on again, we'll be doing mental health first aid. So all of the people who are going out there are getting training, which is super important. As far as what's needed, obviously, the very first thing that should be on that list is affordable, supported housing. Everything else that we're doing here is a Band-Aid. Sometimes the Band-Aid adheres better than others, but it still is a Band-Aid unless people have housing. So I would challenge the entire city council to look into ways that we can provide housing for people who are unhoused. And having it supported will help ensure their success. It would be based on the model that Hub City Village will be based on, where there would be either a peer support worker or a professional outreach person that would be embedded in whatever housing was there, an apartment-style housing or whatever. And that person would be able to help these people navigate all of the services that they need and ensure their success reintegrating into society. So that's super important. Another thing that's really important that I know has been discussed at a previous meeting, and that is providing people with a method of trash disposal. Excuse me, I took a group out behind Talking Waters in Simpson Park today, and there is an encampment there. It's it's their own village. This is people grouped together so they can be feel safer. And one of the biggest issues that they have is they have no place to dispose of their trash. And so consequently, there's a lot of trash lying on the ground. I had quite a few of the members of the community say we really want to clean this up, but we don't know what to do with the trash. We were told stories of Parks and Rec discouraging people disposing of their trash in the waste barrels at Talking Waters. So they have no place to put their trash. So I would highly encourage a conversation about getting a dumpster out there so that the trash can be taken care of. There was one other very quick thing that I to talk about, and that was a meeting that Stacy and I had with Amanda Bressler from the library. And she told us that the library has become a gathering place for unhoused people so that they can stay warm during the winter months, and they can charge their cell phones. And their library staff is not equipped to handle any mental health issues that might come up. If we had some type of a program like Kahoots in Eugene where there were people that were dedicated to going out for crisis response, I think that that would go a long way in helping ease the tension between people who are living in the city and using city services and the unhoused. I can tell you more about Kahoots at another time if you'd like. I would love to talk to you a little bit more about it, as I said, at another time, and fill you in on how it works and how I think it could work successfully in Albany. Thank you so much for letting me take all of this time to tell you about this.
So, Miss Davies, I appreciate your comments. In the future, would you please submit written materials?
Absolutely.
Because it would help the council as a group understand before we actually have a person come and speak with us.
Yes, I apologize for not doing that, and I will do that in the future.
Thank you very much. And so, Council, we're going to hold off until business from the council to respond to that. I am going to ask the city manager to respond. Counselor Olson, we're going to respond at business from the council.
Is she going to be here when we're done with our meeting, so I can ask her a question?
Are you going to be here, Miss Davies?
Yes, I will make sure I'm here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
City manager, you have a comment?
No, really, only two. One, the first one is to thank Miss Davies for all. I know that she's putting in lots of time and doing what she's engaged in. So I, as a as a member of the community, am grateful for that. As far as the other suggestion about waste opportunities, the staff are looking at that, and we'd be happy to come back and and brief the possibilities there at a later date.
Thank you very much. And Miss Davies, we're going to respond to business from the council. And I do, we all, every one of us appreciate the hard work you're doing, and Councilor Bartholomew has brought me up to speed. And we do have work to do, and I appreciate you guys running point on this. So and I know there's opportunities in the future for us to engage as far as grant monies and stuff that are available through the state and federal government. And I'm hoping that this conversation will move forward. So we'll talk more when the council asks her questions on business from the council.
Thank you.
So next up on the agenda today is second reading with ordinance, Albany Municipal Code, amend the Albany Municipal Code Title eighteen, Building Board of Appeals, which was shared with us with Jonathan Balkema, our building professional on Monday. And so the first reading was 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 on the twelfth of January. They receive the automatic second reading tonight. Will the city attorney please read the ordinance entitled only?
Thank you. An ordinance amending ordinance five-eight-seven-seven, which amended Albany Municipal Code AMC Title eighteen, Building Code Administration and Property Maintenance relating to the Building Board of Appeals and the appeals process for Title eighteen matters.
Motion about the ordinance?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there a discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. None appearing none. Was it? So could you roll call votes? I didn't hear Counselor Novak. So could we roll call vote, Allison?
Sir?
Yes.
Forgive me, you asked about discussion, and I did think of something after you said hearing none. That's why I didn't. That's why I didn't vote out loud. If I might ask, and I didn't say this when we did the first reading because it didn't occur to me, but I'm just wondering, we're spending time amending these development codes, but we are also having to do what comes down from Salem, and Salem is dictating development. So I'm kind of wondering about are we just going through some kind of motion here that when when we have to do what Salem is going to tell us to do?
So Counselor Novak, it was amending the process to speed it up for people that wanted to come.
And that's Yes, and giving more time. So I guess, yeah, I guess I I'm definitely voting yes, but I'll wait for the roll call. Thanks for reminding me. Thank you. That's what it is.
Allison?
Yeah.
Yes, sir. Counselor Bartholomew.
Yes.
Counselor Kupczynski.
Yes.
Counselor Johnson.
Yes.
Counselor Smith.
Yes.
Counselor Olson.
Yes.
Counselor Novak.
Yes.
Thank you, Council. Thank you, Allison. Thank you, Johnson, for coming this evening. Next on the agenda, item seven was pulled from the agenda by a supplemental agenda issued yesterday. And that was a good discussion we had about the property on Madison. The next up is it was pulled from the agenda, so we'll discuss it later date. Adoption of resolutions authorizes sole source procurement of True Point Solutions brought to us by Sean Park on Monday. Does the staff have an additional report?
And Mayor, I don't believe that Sean has an additional report, but I'll wait to confirm that with him.
Okay, he's I see him on the screen, S Y S.
Yeah.
Okay, there is he coming on? Go ahead, Sean.
Apologies for that delay, Mayor. I'm here for questions, however.
Okay.
Council, do we have any questions for Sean? Counselor Smith.
I am prepared to make a motion to approve the resolution on page thirteen of the agenda. Authorizing the city councils and local contract review board waiving competitive bidding and awarding a sole source contract to True Point Solutions LLC.
Second. Do I have a second? Oh, she's adding another hand up. Counselor Bartholomew.
Yes, I just want to express my appreciation for this decision that the staff has made because there were issues regarding using the computer system to work through permitting, and this will improve that and streamline it, and I'm very appreciative of that. So I just wanted to say those things. Thank you.
Thank you. So do we have a second?
I already did.
You already did. I didn't hear. I'm sorry. So, Council, all those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed say no. Motion, resolution passes.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council.
You're welcome. So thanks for coming this evening. Okay, the next one is authorized partial department, partial recreation department to apply for a CDG, CDBG grant express support for the Healthy Cities Grant Director of the Day.
Hi, good evening. Can you all hear me?
Uh huh, can.
Perfect. Thank you so much, Mayor and Council, for the time this evening. And I first off have to apologize, as normally this probably would have happened last month, but I put the cart before the horse and wasn't thinking, and when I hadn't applied for a CDBG grant that was over twenty-five thousand dollars. So now I am back to say And when I hadn't applied for a CDBG grant that was over twenty-five thousand dollars, so now I am back to say, I hope that's okay. If not, I can withdraw, totally good. I just figure when you have opportunities to seize money and potentially utilize partnerships, I tried to jump on it. So my bad, I thank you for your patience and your understanding. So I am coming to you today with no action besides hopefully the adoption of a resolution saying you're okay with the department proceeding forward to try to get some additional funds specifically to help improve Burkhart Park, which is in one of our low moderate income, low medium income tracks. And it all just kind of came together at the same time where potentially we could go to CDBG and apply for funding for a project that isn't necessarily just replacing a section of sidewalk or redoing a parking lot. Which don't get me wrong, those are incredibly important, and we have a very long list of those things to do. But we're able to patch that money together a little bit more over the next ten years through the city services fee than potentially taking on redoing of a court with this sizable amount. And so the National Fitness Campaign came through and took a look at us, and they said, you know what? You guys would be a great location to have this outdoor fitness court. They've put in, they've put in, I think, over five hundred. They're they're just trying to spread out. And in the time of COVID, where folks are not necessarily the most comfortable continuing to go inside and work out, or where there is financial barriers, where, you know, folks are struggling, and you don't have the money to go in and and join a gym. How awesome would it be to bring an amenity to one of our communities that needs some additional love and TLC and potentially make this happen? And so if if we, I sat in on the grant presentations earlier this week, and there are lots of really outstanding projects. And so this is very competitive. There's no by any way, shape, or form knowing that we would even be granted this. But should we be granted a CDBG grant? The National Fitness Campaign would go ahead and release three thirty thousand dollars to us to go towards it. The remaining amount to help redo the pad that's currently existing out there, we would be able to take care of within our current existing budget or through sponsorship or donation. And so we would be able to put in a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollar amenity for very little cost to the city. And without this opportunity, it it will be probably five years or more before Burkhart Park has any substantial real work done on it. So I'm just coming today to to see if you have any questions, to see if you have any, and your hope is that you'll express some support. This is non-binding whatsoever. It's just the opportunity to to continue to have those applications out there. And should they come through, we'd be able to move forward with it.
Thank you. Thank you, Director. I see a couple of counselors who have their hands up. So Counselor Johnson, you can go first, and then Counselor Kupczynski.
Hey, thank you. Yes, Director Ladein, I I've always said that, you know, we need to get our parks, our existing parks, you know, upgraded or whatever. And so, you know, it's kind of like do it next, ask forgiveness later, but I understand what happened. I do that too. I was gonna ask you for a couple of things. Do you know what? Okay, I read and looked at the examples and stuff. Do you know how much maintenance there's gonna be on that? Is there very little?
So that is the exact question I had, because we know what our resources are and what they're going to be. And because they're designed for urban environments, there are some in downtown San Francisco. They are made with materials that are graffiti resistant. There aren't a lot of moving parts, so you don't necessarily have to worry about changing things out or updating hardware. And I don't want to jinx myself, but apparently it's very hard to steal anything off of it. And so they have pretty low maintenance requirements outside of going out annually to inspect like we would any other playground and and just doing the basic stuff. But as far as things that could walk away or break, they have done their absolute best to minimize that because they know that's not a favorite thing of Parks and Recreation districts these days with with minimal funding. So I'm really glad you asked that question, because that was my first concern was, we can't bring on anything else that we can't take care of. So I feel pretty good about this one, based on the information that I have.
Yeah, and it looks like that you could actually almost do a pressure wash on it, and it's good. Now, I just want to make a comment that when I moved here in eighty-eight, down to Monte Park on, it's the day part path, there were fitness structures all the way along. And I will have to say, I never saw anybody use it, but I'm sure they did. And now I think they've all been removed, you know, which is good. But I think the concept of having it all in one place is gonna make it easier for people. You know, other than to go to one and then go twenty, thirty feet down the path and whatever. So I'm, I mean, if we can get that grant, let's go for it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Director. Thank you, Counselor Johnson. Counselor Kupczynski was next, and then be followed by Counselor Novak.
I'll make a motion to authorize Parks and Recreation Director to apply for funds to support installation of an outdoor fitness court at Burkhart Park for the twenty twenty-two National Fitness Campaign.
I second.
I I I'm sorry, but Counselor Novak had a question beforehand.
They do that after we've had a second, that's.
Okay, so in a second, okay. So Counselor, thank you, Ray. Well, Counselor Kupczynski. You're muted, Counselor Novak.
Thank you. Sorry about that. I appreciate the discussion on maintenance, and I'm also always excited about grants. My only question is, Director Ladein, you had said whatever the grant didn't cover or something would be at very little cost to the city. So I'm wondering if you could elaborate on that, what sort of cost to the city? What are we looking at? Do we have any idea?
Sure. So it would probably be anywhere between twenty to thirty thousand dollars. There's currently a concrete pad out there that has a tennis court that is very aged and not used as much because of recreation trends changing. There are some basketball hoops out there. So instead of having to go in and pour a new pad, which could be very costly, we would be able to use money that we would normally use to to reinvest into a park to be able to go in and help figure out what needs to be done to that concrete pad, just to smooth it out or make sure everything's level. So without us going in, it's hard for me to say exactly how much. And it's possible we could even find a local contractor or a sponsor who would be interested in doing that work for us. We've had similar wonderful partners who have expressed interest in helping with projects like this in the past. So it would all just kind of be a matter of if the other pieces of the puzzle fall into into place, we could potentially leverage that to do it for for very little.
Okay.
Does that help?
It helps. It helps a little bit. I I guess it maybe what it all boils down to is from what I'm hearing you say, there's there's really no way to know at what cost until you see how it works out. I don't know if people ever donate their services. I certainly have done that. But I just, when I heard the words at very little cost to the city, I thought, okay, but what cost? That's all.
I would expect we would be out of pocket about twenty thousand dollars, which for a project of this size would be a bargain. So, and that's pretty much routine maintenance for for some of our parks, you know, within a cycle. So it it would be within a normal amount of money that we would spend to to reinvest into some infrastructure.
So I guess then the bottom line question that I have is, is that money that we have somewhere? Or or would we have to increase a fee on the public in order to cover it? I just, that's that's, I guess, the most bottom line thing for me. Thank you.
Sure. So with the money that's coming in through the city services fee, we've put together a priority list of our deferred maintenance. And so it's, you know, something would just get tweaked a little bit, so that we could take advantage of an opportunity that's ahead of us.
Okay, and again, I appreciate opportunities. I just, I'm I'm really wanting to look out for constituents and make sure that we're not gonna have to raise fees because we want to do a good thing. And I know it's a good thing. I'm just hoping there's a way to cover that cost. That's all. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Novak. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed say no. Can we get a roll call vote? I didn't hear everyone. Allison, please.
Find the right mouse. Okay. Counselor Bartholomew.
Yes.
Counselor Kupczynski.
Yes.
Counselor Johnson.
Yes.
Counselor Smith.
Yes.
Counselor Olson.
Yes.
Counselor Novak.
I want to give it a qualified yes, and I'm not sure I can do that. I just would say pending not having to raise any sort of fees on on the public.
Is that a yes or a no?
I know. It's a, it's a, it's a yes. It's a yes. But I I really, I I just, I'm concerned about that, and I I want to state that. So thank you.
Thank you.
So what's your count? Those opposed say no, so we have a pass?
That was passed six to zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all very much for your time.
Thanks for the counsel. Thanks, you're the Director Ladein. Next on the agenda is apply for a FY fiscal year twenty twenty-one Safer Grant. And that is gonna be Fire Chief Wooton, gonna speak with us this evening.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. Before I I explain this request, I want to tell you that after we got off with the presentation, goosebumps again. I gotta see a mom run up and give a hug to the Home Depots, Home Depot employees and thank them for saving her son's life. So yet another special moment of that whole event. So anyway, so with that, council, before you, is a request to apply for three additional firefighters from the twenty twenty-one Staffing for Adequate Fire and Emergency Responders Grant. As you recall, we have applied for this grant many times now without any recent success. The grant's very, very competitive. But given the record number of calls we are experiencing and the significant amount of money spent on overtime assuring our current staffing levels, it makes sense, I believe it makes sense to apply for this grant again. The grant will cover one hundred percent of the requested three firefighter positions for three years. It will be used to augment our current staffing levels and occasionally increase them. As I've explained in the past, we have a minimum level of firefighters on duty every day to maintain service levels. And when firefighters are sick or injured, we rely on overtime to fill those spots. These grant funded positions will primarily aid in minimizing the frequency of needing firefighters to work overtime, while at the same time occasionally increasing our staffing. I know in the past, you've had reservations about the Safer Grant, and some of you have asked questions about it. Let me just try to answer some of those questions right now. Oh, we know that future budgets equate to uncertainty. So I need you to know that if if you decide in the future that we need to lay off firefighters during the life of the grant, FEMA will terminate the grant, and we will have to request a waiver and may be required to return the funds that have already been dispersed to us. So that is a, that is a risk for future decisions, I want you to know. Another risk is that we receive the grant, and then there becomes this generalized expectation that we retain the three positions. I've had conversations with the bargaining union, union president or unit president, and have informed him that if we apply for the grant, we'll need written, a written agreement explaining that there there shouldn't be any expectation that the positions be retained at the end of the grant. Our purpose here is it to increase the cost to the city. It's actually hopefully to to save, to save some money and increase, occasionally increase service levels. However, however, we we might be able to absorb the positions at the end of the grant just through attrition three years from now when the grant ends. I mean, there's always movement in the department with maybe people going to another department or retirement. So hopefully, we'll be able to absorb those positions as well as it will kind of allow us to provide a little bit of an experiment to see if having those additional positions cuts down on our overtime. And we'll be able to run that experiment on the federal dollar. Again, we're experiencing record number of calls. Our people are working a lot of overtime, and quite frankly, they're getting tired. Getting people to work extra is becoming more and more difficult. And Albany Fire is not unique. Departments all around us, actually nationwide, are experiencing similar issues. So adding three firefighters would go a long way in helping our department and meeting the community's needs. Again, I'm only asking for permission to apply for the grant. If we receive the grant, which would probably happen sometime this summer into the fall, I would need to come back to you for permission to actually receive those dollars. So with that, I'll answer any questions you may have.
I I would like to hear, thank you very much, Chief. I'd like to hear the city managers, if they have any thoughts on the issue, any implications for us.
Well, thank you, Mayor. If you if you read my Friday report of of last week, or I think it may have been two weeks ago, I put a little entry in there about the calls for service that the fire department is facing. And you know that we've had a record number of calls for service last year. So, you know, there's, we don't anticipate with the growth of the city, we don't anticipate those required, those calls to to go down unless we can find a innovative way to kind of get folks to think very carefully about calling nine one one. But overall, we have a general expectation that calls for service will continue to trend upward. You know, as evidenced by Kim Ladein's request just recently, we, I think we all agree that grant money is good. I would love to take dollars in the form of grants and defray the costs to the city of any of our services. So, and then I I would also say that Shane, Chief Wooton, did a really good job of addressing the concerns that I have had in the past and also the concerns that I I know that you all have had. So I don't really need to add anything further than that. I would yield to any counselors that might have any questions or or comments of their own.
Thank you very much, Peter. The next, the first person to speak up was Counselor Johnson. She still was.
Thank you, yeah. Chief, I just wondering, you said that if something happens and we have to get rid of the positions that we might have to come back. After the three years, do we have to keep them on for a certain amount of time, or if this is a different one where it actually cuts off?
No, we don't have to keep them. We've received the Safer Grant a couple other times, and we were able to absorb those positions through attrition. One time, and then the other time, it was right about when Millersburg opened their station, and we just moved those positions over to Millersburg, and we're actually able to retain them. But we are under no expectation after that three years when the grant's over.
Great, then I say go for it.
Counselor, thank you very much, Counselor Johnson, and Counselor Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. I was just gonna say that both the chief and the city manager answered all the questions that I had about this. The the retention of the positions after the end of the grant has always been a concern. And I am encouraged that you've had the conversation with the bargaining unit about giving you assurance in writing that there won't be any expectations that those positions be retained if, once the grant is over with. With that in mind, I would, I'm prepared to move to adopt the resolution authorizing the Albany Fire Department to apply for funds not to exceed one million three hundred thirty-two thousand three hundred seventy-eight dollars through the U.S. Department of Homeland Security Fiscal Year twenty twenty-one Staffing for Adequate Fire and Emergency Response Grant Program Safer for Hiring Firefighters, on page twenty-three.
So before we, we have one more person with discussion, that's Counselor Olson.
Yes. Is the increase due to ambulance calls or firefighting?
Counselor Olson, it's it's primarily ambulance calls, but our, but our people are dual roles, so they're doing both.
Okay, and does that seem to correspond with our COVID problems?
Yes and no. So we we increased probably about fourteen hundred calls this past year. And some of those, yes, are attributed to COVID nineteen, specifically more the surge this past summer, the Delta surge. We saw, we were taking quite a few people from their homes to the hospital. I'd say with this most recent surge, we've had more calls because of that. They're generally though interfacility transfers from one hospital to the next, and the occasional patient from home. It's also just a function of our city getting larger. It's a function of our changing demographic, you know. I'm not sure if previous chiefs have told you, but you know, if you add a facility like Bonaventure in North Albany with three hundred beds, you you can pretty much guarantee that each one of those beds is going to add one call per year at a minimum. So, you know, when you add three hundred beds from a home, you easily could increase your call volume, three, four hundred calls a year. And and Albany is experiencing that, and so are other communities. Where the decisions that you're faced with, I'm faced with, were not unique at all.
Okay. Okay, well, thank you very much. If our calls go down a little bit, we can still use the manpower anyway. So, I appreciate your applying for these position or money for these positions.
Thank you much, counsel. Thank you, Rush Counselor Olson. Thank you, Chief. Do we have a, we have a motion and a second? All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed say no. Hearing none, we passes. Thank you, residents who passes.
Thank you. The department thanks you.
Okay. Thank you all. The next is adoption of the consent calendar. We did have a special change. I added a person that was, that applied, but I couldn't get it in time due to work situation on the last consent calendar. So, council, do you have a chance to take a look at that? With the council, so I added, added the appointment of Courtney Stubbs, the Community Development Commission. And our housing chair was added the supplemental agenda issued yesterday by the city clerk. Would the council like to make a motion?
I would move for the adoption of the consent calendar with the supplemental agenda that you presented.
Seconded.
We have a second. We have discussion. I see Counselor Smith hand up.
I just wanted to, to comment that I am pleased to see some of these names popping up. They're people who have been involved in government in the past or have not been and, or have chosen to go into a different role as a, as an appointee. Jenny Jordan in particular and Steve Reynolds are happy to see, nice to see Oscar coming back to landmarks and I, I'm just encouraged to see people who have something to contribute, wanting to contribute in this way.
I concur. Thank you, Counselor Smith. Counselor Johnson, I see your hand up.
Yeah, I just could have mentioned that with, with Oscar Holt and stuff, Counselor Novak and I kind of had to arm wrestle for him and she won.
No, I didn't.
So, I'm.
Nice job, Counselor Novak.
I love Oscar, but that wasn't me.
Wrong person. Thanks.
And I, I'm encouraged. I was driving around. We had a person leave the Community Development Commission. And I was, it was like the last minute type thing and I was banging my head on the table, not literally, but I was trying to figure out how I'm going to do this. And this young lady's name popped up and her, her husband's a minister. She's in real estate and she also provides housing for people in housing insecurity and her, her name just popped. I was just drive, headed over to City Hall and her name just popped into my head and I called her immediately. And she said, I'd love to take a look at it. And then she looked at it and she talked about it and she accepted my offer, request for her to serve. And so I'm really happy to see that this young family, this young, this young Albany, Albanyite is, is going to participate in local government. So, I'm excited. So, we have a motion and a second. Is, do we have a, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. The consent calendar has been adopted. Thank you very much. So, next up is item 11, Business from the Council. And my screen shows me Counselor Smith first.
Oh, you would pick me on a night when I have a list. But it's rel, it's relevant list. First, I, I'm excited about the potential for the grant at Burkhart Park. That, that fitness thing sounds really fun. And I wish I could have it at my park, but I'll just keep walking the neighborhood instead. Also, number two, I saw on Nextdoor in the last week or so, a, an ad hoc effort to raise money for the therapeutic spa at the community pool. And I'm, I would just, I'd like to have, get some information about where we are with that project. I think it got stalled during the worst of COVID and, and now it's, it's kind of back on the radar. So, if Director Ladain knows anything about that, she can contribute. I'd be thrilled.
Sure. Thank you for asking about it. It's a project that has been going on for a couple of years and I have to mention that it is all grassroots. Specifically, Monica Weber is an absolute powerhouse and wonderful person. She is mobilizing others and she's even got some grant writers who are interested in coming on board to help. So, at this point, they've raised over $20,000, which is pretty incredible when you think that that's from a collection of pop cans, individual donations and the sale of candles and holiday crafts over the last couple of years. So, if you go to the pool anytime in the next couple of weeks, I think they're going to have Valentines out there that they're selling that are handmade. So, every $5 counts. It gets us a little bit closer. But yes, there's information on our website. If you click under aquatics, it'll have therapeutic spa. It'll tell you all about the program and ways to give. We would love support. So, thank you for the shout out.
Thank you.
Very much, Director. And thank you much, Counselor Smith. Next. My city manager.
Mayor, I'll just tell you that I was at the pool at 6 o'clock this morning and there are plenty of Valentine's candles available for sale.
Okay. Thank you. I saw you this morning. Yes, I did. Okay. So, Counselor Kocinski is next on my screen.
I had a sample, campo. Oh, best, Bessie, you raised your hand?
I just, I don't think Counselor Smith was done.
I don't think she was.
I'm sorry. Counselor Smith, are you not done?
I just had one more that, other item, but I think we're going to all talk about it as a group. I was going to talk about the Carol Davies' presentation. I had several comments about that. I'll, I'll hold that till everybody else is ready.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Kocinski.
Okay. We had a Albany area metropolitan planning organization meeting along with Corvallis. It's a monthly meeting that we have. And one neat thing tidbit that was offered at the very end by Benton County Commissioner Pat Malone, who's our outgoing chair, he said that Gibson Hill project is very, very close to being completed, to be turned over, the maintenance and to be turned over to the city of Albany. That's been an ongoing process for quite a while. I didn't quite pick up on exactly how close it was, but he alluded to that it was getting very close to being done.
Thank you. Anything else, Counselor? Okay. Excellent. Counselor Johnson, you're next up.
Different tones in my mouth, right? Like Counselor Smith, I have a little list. First, I want to thank whoever staff it is that makes the agenda. Thank you so much for putting the page number for the resolution on. That really helps. You can just go right to it. And then, um, I wanted to say last time or was it, yeah, last time we had counselor, there was a proclamation on stalking.
Yes.
And I want to say that I have heard a couple of news reports that there's app, it's called Apple AirTag where you can put it on your keychain or whatever and it's supposed to, you're supposed to be able to with your phone, find your keys. Well, apparently, there's been reports that people are being stalked. In fact, I think it happened in Southern Oregon where the lady had no idea and someone was stalking her. She didn't know if it was to her car or what, but finally she figured it out. And so, it's just kind of a public service message, I guess, is to be careful with those because the first news report I heard was where especially like in New York where people do more walking and people going home from work or whatever, people actually get on to somehow, get on to their frequency or whatever and follow them. And so, that's kind of a dangerous thing. And since we have the stalking proclamation, I thought that's a, a good thing to do.
And then. What is the function of one of these air tags?
Well, you put, you, you put it on your key ring and then you have an app on your phone apparently to where, you know, you lose your keys or you can just actually beep it or something and then it beeps so that you can follow the noise where your keys are or anything else.
Never lost my keys, so.
Yeah. They, well, they say that people also put them on their kids' backpacks.
Yeah.
And you know, so that, that's why, I mean, I mean, I lose my keys, but that's a little bit much. And then the other thing that I wanted to bring up is that I was going to bring it up Monday and then I, we kind of ran out of time, but I was asking the city manager and finance director about the marijuana taxes that we get with the LOC article. I was going to ask this before that, but like, how much do we get? Where does it go? And why is it that we can't know? I mean, it's been like a secret. And I remember Gina saying, well, I can't tell you where it's go or how much, which is, yeah, so I just wonder. I, I, I emailed Peter early, so he knows I'm coming. All right.
Counselor Johnson.
And Gina's prepared to answer those questions if you'll give her the time, Mayor.
Okay.
Well, I, I, before we continue, I apologize to Ms. Davies, Mrs. Davies. Let's address that, her comments. I know she's been waiting for us. So, Carol, please forgive me for that. And counsel, before we move on, Gina, I will call on you, Director Yeager. Anybody, any comments for Mrs. Davies?
I don't.
Counselor Olson.
Yes. I, I wanted to talk about the garbage problem of Talking Waters Garden. And I ran into a, a couple of my constituents today at the grocery store. And they were complaining about litter and garbage and stuff at Talking Waters Garden. And they didn't mention people being out there, but that, that is a problem. And if there's no place to put garbage and junk and so forth, it's hard for me to blame anybody for not knowing what to do with it. If you don't have a wheelbarrow or a car or whatever, you can't. And, and anyway, where could you haul it if you did? So, I'd like to mention that with my so-called waterfront property here and being a block and a half from a convenience store, many people used to find it convenient to drop cups, straws, wrappings, even dog droppings along the bank. Probably thinking it was city property, which it is, and nobody would care. But I found that if I put my garbage dumpster out there along the canal, which I have done for several years now and I'm probably breaking rules, regulations, resolutions, maybe even ordinances. But I haven't gotten caught so far. It has really solved the problem. And I'm wondering if there's some way that we could come up with putting a dumpster or two out there at strategically located spots in Talking Waters Garden. And I'm thinking if the cost wouldn't be too prohibitive, maybe a Dickles Memorial Dumpster perhaps.
Well, you're still with us, so it won't be memorial. You're still with us, so you won't be memorial.
Well, probably not for very long.
Well, I hope, I hope you're with us for a while.
Well, thank you. So, does staff have any ideas along those lines?
Director Ladain is, is able to answer part of your question, I'm sure. And of course, if, if we want to go any further in depth, we're going to look a little further into it. So, I'll turn it over to you, Kim.
Sure. Thank you. Yes, Chris, Marcia and I have had lengthy conversations about this as well as with our team as there are some challenges. You think that it would be easy to collect garbage, but it, these aren't small amounts of household garbage. These are substantial amounts. And so, I, I don't know if we want to go fully into it, but there are some challenges that come up with safety, security, potentially violating some of our own ordinances. And so, we're happy to continue to look at it, but it is things that would potentially have to come back to council for, for guidance and approval. A permanent dumpster out there is not ideal as it is, is not ideal. I can leave it at that. But we can go ahead and look at potentially, we discussed and even with Counselor Bartholomew, you know, if working with a nonprofit, if they come out sporadically on weekends and their cleanups, that is more doable than creating a consistent. I know the word amenity is horrible to use, but that's kind of what it becomes if, if you're guaranteeing a service in a place where folks aren't supposed to be camping.
Well, I've, some sage at some point said some laws and rules are made to be violated, but hopefully you can come up with something.
I may have an opportunity when I get to my chance to speak, so I'll bring that up when I get there.
Okay.
City manager? And then I'm going to go to Counselor Novak afterwards.
Anyway, I'm volunteering. If, if money is the problem, I, I would like to volunteer some towards the solution.
All right. Thank you, sir.
There, there have to be limits someplace.
City manager?
Mayor, if memorials are named after people who are still alive, they're called the honorary dumpster.
Oh, okay.
What I wanted to point out, and I would defer to Director Bailey, is that the council needs to keep in mind that this is also in, in the city of Millersburg. So, this is not exactly something that we can do on our own recognizance.
Really?
Thank you. Thank you, city manager. Counselor Novak.
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to thank Ms. Davis for what she's doing specifically. I mean, in all the ways she's helping people through COAT and specifically in increasing the communication between these agencies that are out there and their reason to be is to help people, but they're not communicating. So, I applaud any effort, anything that causes people to, all these people who want to help to communicate with one another and make things better, streamline things, make things more efficient. So, I really support that. I, I was concerned because she mentioned that they were living out there for safety's sake together. And I recalled Counselor Smith mentioning that we do have an ordinance against camping. And one of my concerns, and I know it's in Millersburg now, that's been pointed out. So, I see that there's, you know, we can't, we don't have any jurisdiction there. But I was wondering if they are indeed, if there are people living out there to be safe together, I was wondering if they have been provided portable toilets. Because if you're going to live somewhere along with trash, you need a place to, to deal with life in a body. And I would hope that if, if that situation is, is taking place, that, that there is someone out there providing something to, to make things better. Because that's, that's super important. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Novak. Counselor Bartholomew, you have anything for Mrs. Davies?
I just wanted to let people know that the annual point in time count is happening this week every night and during the day also. People are being counted for those who are not housed. The shelters are doing their counts automatically. And then COAT and other agencies are joining together to, in, in Benton and Lynn County to count as many people as possible so that we can get those federal funding for these efforts.
Thank you, Counselor Bartholomew. I think that's everyone, Counselor, what Kocinski, you already spoke, right? You shared yours. Okay. So, the last thing, Counselor Johnson, do you have something?
Um, no, I think everyone said what I was going to say about that.
Okay. So, for me, so Counselor Novak, your hand still up?
I'm putting my hand down, yes.
So, I'm glad, I'm glad that Counselor Olson volunteered, was willing, pretending to volunteer. I had a meeting last Friday with a group of interested individuals about meeting just to talk about city issues. And one group brought up something that Peter and I have, or city manager and I have talked about for a few months. It's a program kind of like, what was it? Albany, Los Angeles, Beautiful or something like that. And they actually want to do something like that in City of Albany. So, a group of volunteers that comes together for cleanup projects throughout the community. And so, I was excited when Counselor Olson said he participates. I plan to participate. And Mrs. Davies, I think that we could leverage getting those folks connected and getting involved. It would take effort, but I do have some examples from other cities around the nation that these people that just live in their community that want to continue to beautify it and, and, and make the city better for everyone that lives here. So, I will reach out to the city manager and we can talk about what that would look like and then engage the. And then engage the, engage us in that conversation. I think that what, what Mrs. Davies has done is pointed out a problem that we're not talking to each other, and we must be better at that. And that's our partners, that's our city council, that's the staff. We need to talk to each other. And I think that this is an opportunity to bring some communication that is free to the city for everyone involved. So thank you for that. I do have a couple, at least, Bailey, Chris, Director Bailey, do you have something?
And just a couple of clarification points. I think there was, at least, I misunderstood, I may have misunderstood, but I think someone said there are no garbage cans in Talking Water Gardens, and there are garbage cans in Talking Water Gardens for the use, you know, people who might walk with a, a cup or, or something, you know. But they are not of the size that would be really helpful for this number of people, and they're actually within the wetlands. Where the, the camping is taking place sort of north of the wetlands in a wooded area that's sort, adjacent to Second Lake. Those of you that were here fifteen, however many years ago, will remember the Camp Boondoggle area. And that's the same space. So I just wanted to clarify that. And if you have any other questions about that space and our concerns, we, we're happy to talk with the group and see what solutions there might be that, that the council might want to consider.
So thank you very much, Director. So this was during my time, so I'm not finished yet. I have received several emails from people throughout the city. And I forwarded one to the city manager, people concerned about their water bills. And so I did forward one to, to the city manager, and I will be talking with him about that tomorrow. And also several police activity type reports that we see from people in our community that have a concern. So I've reached out to, so the chief of police and I are gonna talk about those. And, and see if we can either respond to these citizens or, or address them and look through the police department, or even if that's a police issue that needs to be addressed. And so thank you, Chief Harden, for willing to meet with me regarding this matter. And other than that, we had, I had the pleasure of meeting the candidates, the final candidates for the where Albany Public Schools yesterday and today. And it was nice to see the city council represented well, so Counselor Olson, Counselor Bartholomew, and the city manager were there, so I really appreciate us being involved, and also Director LaDana was there. Our chief of police was there, our new sheriff was there. So it was nice to see community leadership come out and, and introduce themselves and have a conversation with those candidates. So thank you for that. I saw two hands go up, and now I'll go ahead and move on to the next on the agenda. I saw Counselor Smith, and I saw Counselor Johnson's hand go up, or Counselor Bartholomew, I'm sorry. And now Counselor Johnson. So Counselor Smith, you're first.
Thank you. Returning to the, the topic of failed communications among the service agencies and organizations that operate in Albany. That is an incredible disappointment to me, after working with, from the founding start, I mean, heart, thirteen years ago, and actively working with all those organizations monthly for thirteen years, and now they're not talking to each other any longer. That's, that's what, that's what they did for thirteen years. They coordinated services. They invented services. They worked closely together. I don't know. Why, I don't know why, why that fell apart. I can't even speak properly. It's, it's a tremendous disappointment to me. I'm glad that Carol and Stacy and others have taken this on and are, are mending that fence. I'm hopeful about that. I'm also familiar with cahoots. We were aiming at a cahoots model with the city services team that was formed in late eighteen. That has gone by the wayside as well. And so if, whatever it takes, start over from scratch. I don't know, but as we're getting, we're, we have people talking about it, we have people doing things about it. So I'm, I'm encouraged by that. I'm sorry that it came to this state ahead of time, but keep moving forward. That's, that's a great idea. I've also got a little experience with public dumpsters and I, I agree with, with what staff has said. We put a dumpster temporarily in the parking lot at the Swanson Building some years ago during a sweep of illegal signs. We had to lock it at night with chains and padlocks because if we hadn't, it would have been filled up with neighborhood trash, because that's what happened the last time it was there. And we were able to keep it safe for our, our sign stash. But that's, that's just something, you know, you see a, you see a big empty, empty box and you throw your stuff in it. It's, it's human nature, and some people have a lot more stuff that needs to be disposed of there. I don't know the solution to the problem, so I'm hoping that we can talk about that and come up with something reasonable.
Yeah, I, I, Counselor Smith, I agree with you. My corporate off, where my office is, we need to tenant share a dumpster, but if we don't have a lock on it, we'll find concrete blocks in it, we'll find chairs in it. Not one of us that put in there, so I agree with you. We need to have a lockable solution if we can get there. I saw Counselor Bartholomew and then Counselor Johnson.
Thank you. As usual, a lot of times Marilyn Smith, Counselor Smith is, is thinking along the same lines as myself in terms of the organization's heart is doing, is still communicating, but services are hard to coordinate when it's just the service providers. And they, they do give each other some information, but I do attend those monthly meetings. I, I wanted to highlight a couple of things, and that is, there was a, a, a suggestion about a coordinator position within the city to coordinate with these organizations. And that it would be a position within the, the city in some form. And in a meeting with several others in COT that are those from Benton and, and Lynn Counties. A worker in Benton County has, has been working on coordination and has said that it's taken five years to get it more streamlined. And I wanted to point that out because it takes, it takes that effort, and it takes that work, and it takes the time to get people coordinated. And it needs, it needs that direction is what we found. So I just wanted to throw that in because we've been having a lot of these discussions and exploring all of these things. I look forward to talking to Mr. Christian Dell, who, to discover more things, more options about this. So thank you.
All right, thank you, Council. I appreciate your input, your feedback. What I'd like to do now is turn it over to City Manager for his report. Oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Johnson?
Yeah, thank you, thank you. First, I, I, I'm gonna maybe go the other way and stuff. I'm, I'm wondering, why are we allowing these, the homeless to camp in a place that's illegal? I mean, to me, that's just a no-brainer. You, you know, they're not supposed to be there. So why would we want to provide services for people who are illegally camping? I'll just kind of leave it at that. But then also, now, if it's back to my time, I think the city manager was gonna answer my question.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Johnson. I don't know if the mayor wants to.
So, so we've gone on for the city council's time. We've been, we've talked about a lot of things. I hope in discuss, discussions would be earlier in the agenda than at the end of the agenda. So I'm gonna give the city manager his time. We're gonna adjourn, adjourn the meeting. And then we'll figure out next agenda, how we bring this back up in a more structured form.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Counselor Johnson's question was, if you recall, way back twenty minutes ago.
Yes.
That was about marijuana revenues. And Gina Jaeger is, does have the questions, and she has been able to obtain that information, so I'll turn it over to Gina.
Thank you. So it's not a secret process. When this first came about, they didn't want us to release information about individual marijuana establishments. And depending on how many establishments there were in a city, if we divided it between state and local revenues, there might be information about that establishment that we wouldn't necessarily want people to, to know. We reported in the general fund, all the money goes to the general fund. We reported in both the budget and the act for our, our financial statements as state and local marijuana revenues. Before Measure 110 came about, we were receiving about seventy-three thousand dollars a quarter, so just under three hundred thousand. After Measure 110, we've been receiving, this is a state portion, about eighty thousand dollars a year. So we've had a reduction of over two hundred thousand dollars. From local taxes, we get in about ninety to a hundred thousand dollars a quarter, so we're sitting on average about three hundred and eighty thousand. Last fiscal year, we had brought in six hundred and five thousand dollars in revenues, which started, we did have that Measure 110 start to show up there. So if you were to, you know, encourage the legislature to go with the ten percent, that doesn't mean that we would have to go that route. But we are receiving about two hundred thousand dollars less a year than what we were before.
So, so my question to you, Director Jaeger, and I'm sorry, Council, this has been on my mind for a while. What are they using that money for?
Yeah, the money, the money is being used for the general fund. Is part of our general fund.
Us, what is this money for?
So the state, so Measure 110 diverted some of the funding to treatment centers. So because they decriminalized a lot of drug usage, they use some of that funding to set up treatment centers across the state.
So, so my question to staff now would be, is that actually happening? Because it, I mean, I've heard, I've heard other mayors and other city councils say, well, we're giving this money, but they're still have the same problem. Where is the money going? That's, I, I like to find out where that money's going. And if it's, if we know where it's going, then what is it being used for?
If I may, Mayor, that, as I understand it, that money hasn't been, been spent for those purposes yet either. And I would add that Measure 110 didn't only take away revenue from the city, it added to the city's workload. So you got hurt on both ends. You got hurt by fewer resources to handle additional workload. So that's a, that's a substantial knock to the city's budget.
Right. It means like they kicked us in the, in the butt and smacked us across the face at the same time.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm sorry about that analogy. This is, it's frustrating.
And that's great. And I would, I would advocate for we go up totally, support the ten percent tax.
I would, Gina, you can chip in, but what they, what the LOC is, is asking us to do is to advocate for a change in the law that would allow us to go up anywhere from three to ten percent. So it doesn't have to be ten percent. It could be four or eight percent. But I, I would, I would think that to have that ability or have that tool available to the city would be, would be a, a good thing to have.
All right, thank you, Council. Thank you, Director Jaeger. I greatly appreciate. Now, I will come, I have more questions for you regarding the topic. Counselor Novak?
Yes, thanks. So that if we raise this tax, this is a tax on marijuana products. I just want to make sure that I'm understanding clearly. Thank you.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Director. City Manager, you can now have your time.
Well, you know, there was only one other thing in addition to that, and we were going to respond to Counselor Novak's request and others, I think, at the last meeting about police patrols in parks.
Yes.
And how, how that is designed and conducted. However, Chief Harden has been called away for a police emergency. So we'll have to table that for the, for the next time that the council meets. My apologies for that.
That's okay.
Thank you.
And that's all I have, Mayor.
Good, thank you. So our, so the meetings for the ERA have not been added to the agenda. So can we, next meeting, will we have that added to the agenda? That's a request that was made by Council. Our next meeting dates, hello? What's Counselor Olson?
Could I ask one last question? Item number seven, has that been tabled or put off indefinitely, talking about disposing of that piece of property on Madison Street Northeast?
Oh, I mentioned it earlier. We did table that for a later time.
But we're still gonna be talking about it.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Well, it seems like a mistake to me. I think we ought to have people coming to us, asking us to sell it to them rather than our, unless we're really, really not very optimistic about what our waterfront project is gonna end up like. If we're thinking that's gonna be kind of a flop, we probably ought to get rid of this property now before, so, before it's just a a, a, we'll wait on our financial situation. Okay, thanks.
Counselor Olson? Next, so next meeting dates are Monday, February seventh at twenty, twenty twenty-two at four P M. Is a work session. And the next one is February ninth, and our next city council meeting is February ninth at six P M for our regular city council meeting. And with that, I'll adjourn the meeting. Thank you very much for participating this evening. I hope to see you around the city sometime this week or next week. And have a wonderful evening. Thank you.